Welcome to everyone. My name is Ron Stern. I'm a rabbi at Stephen Weiss Temple. I'm the chair, the head of the Center for Tikun Olam. As such, we commit ourselves to making our city and our world a better place. And so, of course, a forum like this is of great interest to us. And we do appreciate your presence as concerned and engaged members of Los Angeles, the Los Angeles city community. I want to thank our candidates Lev Baronian, Nithya Raman, and Ethan Weaver for being here to share their insights into some of the issues that are confronting us, facing us in our community. And also particularly thank our moderator and interviewer Alex Kohn. More about her in a moment. We appreciate our partners Valley Beth Shalom, Temple Beth Hillel, Temple Israel of Hollywood, and the Board of Rabbis of Southern California. Together, we have achieved a wonderful response from all of you of having 194 registrants prepared to join us for this call. And we do hope that you'll take advantage of the opportunity to learn about our candidates. So why is it important for the Jewish community to be hosting this forum? First and foremost, as citizens of Los Angeles, we're deeply concerned about the quality of life in our city, both for ourselves and for everyone. We're concerned about the unhoused, we're concerned about the environment, about crime, and about our ability to do business in this city. Second, the Jewish community, as will be not a surprise to anyone who is aware of what's going on in our world, is facing an upswelling of antisemitism, much of it preceding the attack against Israel on October 7th, but increasing to unprecedented levels since. We are concerned about the statements and positions of our public officials because we seek their assurance that they'll exercise every effort they can to suppress anti-Jewish conduct in our city. And we also seek to be reassured that they will use their bully pulpit to secure a civil civic discourse. Quite frankly, many of us have concerns about our well-being, and certainly that of our children in our local schools and in our universities. And we know, we are acutely aware of the fact that we can't do this alone. We depend upon the efforts of our elected officials and their staffs. Finally, as Jews, we know that we have an imperative to build just a just society, where all people can live in peace and in freedom. So in a fitting context and framing for this portion, for this forum, this week, we're reading from the Torah portion that is called Mishpatim. In the cyclical reading of the Torah, the yearly cycles, this section immediately follows the Ten Commandments. Mishpatim means ordinances or rules. True to its title, the portion delves into dozens of rules that are concerned with the overall well-being of society. Rules about how citizens should treat each other, what constitutes criminal behavior, and how those crimes should be dealt with justly by the society in which we will live. As well as, in Mishpatim, we find concern about the rights and privileges of what it means to be a citizen in the communities that we built. This Torah portion, Mishpatim, directly addresses the Torah's vision of a just society. So it is very Jewish to be concerned about the here and now, about who makes the rules and how they are applied. And so, all of our Jewish institutions in CD4, Council District 4, have gotten together to host this forum. I shouldn't say all, but I say many. Finally, as a Jewish community, we are also committed to the principle of derech aritz. Derech aritz reflects the proper way that human beings should treat one another. We expect it of each other and of those who share this planet with us. Unfortunately, all too often, derech aritz is in short supply. However, we are an aspirational people, always believing that we can and must do better. The format of this forum reflects our attempt to both project our commitment to derech aritz for our candidates and to affirm it for ourselves. Our moderator, Alex Kohn, and I assisted through your questions submitted in advance and seek to convey your issues, your concerns to our candidates through the questions that Ms. Kohn will ask. We endeavor to be respectful, yet in search of meaningful responses, so that you, the voters, can make wise choices. And to our candidates, we request that you also treat each other with respect in your comments this evening. It is my pleasure to turn the program over to Ms. Alex Kohn. Before I do, just a word about who she is. She is an Emmy Award-winning journalist with more than 20 years' experience covering Southern California. Currently, she is the political anchor at Spectrum News One, where she launched their nightly primetime program Inside the Issues. Prior to Spectrum, she was the voice of news throughout the day on NPR member station KPCC, now called LAist. We are so grateful that she has made herself available, and we are in good hands, I am sure, as she leads us through our discussion this evening. Alex, it's all yours.
Ron, thank you so much. You forgot the key part of my biography, which is I am actually a preschool graduate of Stephen S. Weiss Temple. It was very, very exciting to get the call to moderate tonight's events. And I just want to get to it as quickly as possible. So I just want to talk a little bit about some of the framework that we've set up here for this evening. Our three candidates will appear in alphabetical order. Each one of them will be given 20 minutes, exactly 20 minutes, to answer questions which, as Ron mentioned, have been submitted by many of you watching this evening. So what I've asked of each of our candidates is to make sure, of course, that your answers are authentic, honest, and thorough. But we try to keep it to no more than two minutes so that we can try to cover as much ground as possible. And also, as Ron mentioned, we would love for these answers to focus on the candidates, your policies and perspectives. This is not a debate this evening. However, at the end of these individual conversations, we will be bringing back all three of our candidates for a brief period of closing statements where they are also welcome to respond to what they have heard this evening. So with that said, it is 7:12. I'm going to start the 20-minute timer momentarily as we begin with Lev Baronian. And Lev, what we would love it if you began with the first one to two minutes introducing yourself, especially if you can include a thing or two that you have yet to share about yourself with voters at previous forums. Go right ahead.
Thank you so much, Alex. My name is Lev Baronian. And as a lifelong Angelino, I'm deeply vested, deeply committed to securing a prosperous future for our city. But before I begin, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to Rabbi Ron Stern and Stephen Weiss Temple, as well as the Temple Israel of Hollywood, Temple Beth Hillel, Valley Beth Shalom, and the Board of Rabbis of Southern California for hosting and co-sponsoring this event. Over the past two decades, I've dedicated my career to tackling complex challenges in both business and government. As a computer scientist and senior software engineer, I've had the privilege of contributing to groundbreaking projects, including eight years with NASA, where I received accolades for introducing technological innovations and advancements to that agency. My experience extends to the private sector as well, where I spent seven years at a leading financial institution developing systems that managed over $700 billion in investments. And throughout my life, I've been a steadfast advocate of our community, serving as a member of the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council for the last seven years and leading youth nonprofit programs. My commitment's always been to prioritize the needs of our community over special interests. As a father and family man, I share our desire to see our city thrive for generations to come. My values are deeply rooted in the Judeo-Christian principles, which guide me in every aspect of my life. These principles emphasize compassion, justice, also community values that are essential for building a better Los Angeles. I bring decades of experience, not just facing complex challenges, but actually solving them. And if elected, I pledge to uphold these principles and work tirelessly to create a city where every resident has the opportunity to thrive. Maybe, you know, a question about me or a fact about me that I haven't shared before is that me and my kids are, you know, the first two generations in my family, the last four or five generations, they were actually born in the same country. I was born here in Los Angeles, and my children were born in Los Angeles. But going back five generations, each of my parents, grandparents, great-parents were actually born in different countries. So I can relate to the concept of diaspora that the Jewish people have had to face for thousands of years. And, you know, I think it's important that, you know, we have a home in Los Angeles. We have to take care of the city because this is home, and it's important to solve the problems. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And among the problems that we face in this city, homelessness, which often seems to many like a very intractable situation because our unhoused population is such a diverse population. If elected, what would be your approach for addressing the city's most pressing problem?
This is one of the most pressing problems, Alex. I agree. And I think it's a multifaceted problem. There was a recent study done by the University of California that actually shed light on a lot of the reasons for the unhoused. Most people tend to think that it's mostly about mental health, you know, disorders or substance abuse. But a recent study found that the majority of people that actually fell into homelessness did so because of a shortage of income of just $300 to $500 a month, which would have kept them housed had they had that opportunity. So, you know, right now, 40% of Americans are struggling, coming up with even $400 for unexpected expenses. So one of the things we need to do is not just focus on housing the currently unhoused, but also prevent more Angelinos from falling into homelessness. And that starts with investing in, you know, in Angelinos in our community, particularly our youth, which is something that I'm very passionate about. You know, the 13, 14-year-olds of today are going to be adults in four or five years, and they need skills to be able to compete in the increasingly, you know, competitive landscape of Los Angeles with increasing costs. Now, when it comes to housing, you know, there's also a program there that I want to look at more closely and implement more closely, which is street medicine. You know, recently, the Congress passed a law that allows for Medicare funds to be used to actually treat people where they're currently at. So you don't have to necessarily bring somebody that's unhoused into a medical facility to treat some of the underlying issues that are preventing them from, you know, being able to get on their feet again. We definitely need more housing in this city. One of the reasons that we have a shortage of housing, which most people are not talking about, is speculative investments. You know, REITs and other investment management firms are buying up properties in many cases and leaving them empty. And in the city where we have a shortage of housing, that practice needs to be, you know, prevented as much as possible. We need short-term housing assistance, shelter-first policies. But we also need long-term housing assistance, provide extended housing assistance in conjunction with active participation in appropriate vocational training and educational programs and rehabilitation. One thing that I also want to focus on is family shelters because we have to kind of, I think we need to treat, you know, families that are unhoused a little bit differently than, you know, people that are not in families, especially children. You know, they require special considerations and services, and that's something that I want to focus on as well.
How important do you believe it is to maintain the integrity of a neighborhood when it comes to providing shelter for the unhoused? And how would you go about doing that, bringing your vision of that to life?
there have been discussions about, and I know we're not supposed to name other candidates, so I'm not going to do that. But there have been discussions about trying to address this issue on a citywide level with a formula that's, you know, for the entire city. I think with a city as large and diverse as Los Angeles, that's just unfortunately not going to work. We do have to look at the specific, you know, geography and characteristics of each of our neighborhoods and come up with programs that will fit within those neighborhoods and respect the unique characteristics of those neighborhoods. You know, a solution that might work in the valley might not work in, you know, midtown, downtown, and vice versa. So I think it's really important that, you know, our city council representatives, who are each elected to represent their district, try to find and implement solutions that actually make sense for the neighborhoods that they are elected to represent.
COVID-era protections have come to an end recently here in L.A. And according to the city's housing department, more than $472 million are currently owed in rent that hasn't been collected. What do you think can and should be done to prevent what many are dubbing a potential eviction tsunami? And how would you compensate commercial and residential property owners who have also lost significant income?
And that's also a very complex question. I think unfortunately, a lot of times, we look at this problem as a zero-sum kind of challenge, where we unfortunately have to pick winners or losers between our lessers and our tenants. I tend to not look at that, look at this problem that way. A lot of our lessers are also facing hardship. Unfortunately, some of the laws that we have in place right now don't adequately differentiate between, you know, big corporate owners of properties and so-called mom-and-pop owners of properties. I think that we need to be much more equitable there. And, you know, in some cases, we have, you know, tenants who might be in a better financial situation than their lessers, who, you know, who were individuals who have just, you know, worked hard and invested in about, you know, small, maybe two or four-unit or eight-unit properties and rely on the income of those properties for their living. So we need to differentiate there between, you know, corporate ownership of properties. At the same time, I think that we need to address this issue with rental assistance. We're spending $1.2 billion a year on homelessness in the city of Los Angeles, and recent counts suggest that there are 50,000 homeless in the city. If you do the math, that's, you know, over $20,000, $22,000, $24,000 per individual that's homeless that we're spending on, you know, in the city. And when you think about that, that's $2,000 a month. In many cases, it's a lot cheaper to help somebody from falling into homelessness than to help them after they've become homeless. So I'm going to look at opportunities where we can assist our tenants so that they can remain in the housing that they're currently at if they're facing hardship. But at the same time, you know, not penalize lessers and landlords who are also in many ways struggling with this issue.
Turning to the topic of crime, by some metrics, certain crimes are rising, other ones are falling. Regardless of the statistics, a lot of Angelinos right now are not feeling safe. How safe would you say CD4 currently is? And if elected, what would you do to reduce the perception that many people have of threats to their well-being?
That's also a very big concern of all of us. And I don't think it's just a perception because the statistics show that this is a real problem. Crime is up, you know, petty thefts and burglaries and whatnot are up 54% in the last few years in Los Angeles. Just a few days ago, statistics came out that say that auto thefts are actually the highest in Los Angeles in nearly two decades. And I think that one of the real reasons we have such a proliferation of petty thefts and burglaries is lack of prosecution. There are directives in place from, you know, the county level all the way down to the city level, including, you know, city attorneys and neighborhood prosecutors, to not prosecute these crimes. I had my catalytic converter stolen last year in broad daylight. I was caught on camera. My neighbor across the street had the footage. I called up the police department, and they said, unfortunately, there's nothing we can do about it because even if we can identify who the person is, that person's likely not going to get prosecuted. So with lack of prosecution, we're actually incentivizing crime. We're basically encouraging crime because these people that are committing these crimes know that there are not going to be repercussions if the property that's being stolen is under a certain amount. Now, with my catalytic converter, there was a loophole there, right? A brand-new catalytic converter costs about $1,800 to $2,000. But because, you know, mine was a used catalytic converter, the assessed value of that is not that much. But guess what? In California, you can't buy a used catalytic converter. So nobody was prosecuted. In many cases, you know, no charges were made. So I think it needs to start with prosecution. But it also needs to, you know, we have to support our police and at the same time, hold them accountable as well to do their jobs. And, you know, this notion of defunding the police or abolishing the police is utter nonsense, in my opinion. We need to have a police department that's adequately funded and supported.
Since his election, L.A. County District Attorney George Gascon has been controversial to many. What is your opinion of Gascon's tenure as, and do you think he should be reelected this year?
I do not think he should be reelected. And some of his policies, including such things as zero cash bail, I'm, you know, completely opposed to. But yeah, I do not think he should be reelected.
We're going to turn now to the topic, as Ron mentioned at the outset, that is important to many of the viewers watching tonight, and that is antisemitism. We'd like to know if you would consider Jews a minority in L.A.? If so, in what way is this group similar or different compared with other minorities?
I do consider Jewish people a minority in Los Angeles. The great thing about Los Angeles, though, is that, you know, in many ways, it's a community, a very diverse community of a lot of different minorities. So, you know, I think that it's a tapestry, a mosaic of a lot of different cultures and ethnicities and backgrounds and lifestyles and whatnot. And that's what makes Los Angeles great. As a lifelong Angelino, I grew up in North Hollywood, and I currently reside in Sherman Oaks. I had the privilege of actually being a part of community, a part of communities that had, you know, deep-rooted Jewish traditions and values growing up in these neighborhoods. I've seen firsthand the resilience and strength of the Jewish people. And as the grandchild of a genocide survivor myself, I can deeply relate to, you know, stories, you know, of surviving the Holocaust. You know, that's shaped my understanding of the importance of living in a world that's free from hatred and bigotry. Recent events, particularly the escalation of, you know, antisemitic incidents tied to, you know, the Israel, you know, Hamas conflict, they deeply trouble me. It's disheartening to see prejudice and discrimination rearing its ugly head, especially in places like Los Angeles where diversity and acceptance should be celebrated. So the rise of, you know, the rise in antisemitism not only threatens the safety and well-being of Jewish individuals, but also undermines the fabric of our entire community and, you know, what Los Angeles is all about. And if elected, I'm going to work very closely with our Jewish community to make sure that the Jewish institutions that are in this district all, you know, feel safe. They feel supported by our government, you know, do not feel threatened in any way, and have the support necessary to proceed with, you know, living their life in a safe and peaceful way.
And if elected, how would you draw the line between legitimate criticism and protest of Israel's policies and outright antisemitism?
You know, the ongoing conflicts in, you know, Israel presents a significant challenge. It has profound humanitarian implications for both Israelis and Palestinians. But there could, criticism, even if it's justified for Israel's policies, should not be a pretext and, you know, a reason veiled, in many cases, not, you know, very thinly veiled, a reason for antisemitism to rear its ugly head, you know, in Los Angeles. Unfortunately, we see some of that, and that's completely unacceptable. You know, Israel's policies, whether people agree with it or not, should not translate in any way how we treat, you know, United States citizens, people that live in our country that are, that just happen to be Jewish, right? And at the same time, you know, I'm not going to shy away from saying that, you know, Israel also deserves support. Israel has a unique relationship with the United States. And I have an unwavering, you know, I have unwavering support for Israel's right to exist. And these are things that obviously, in the city of council, we don't have much power over. You know, I'm not running for Congress or President or anything like that. But at the same time, we have to understand these issues and understand that they can have implications locally, and we have to stop them from having negative implications in our city.
The city of Los Angeles is currently facing a budget gap of potentially up to $400 million. There's a lot of debate and discussion about how the money that we do have should be spent and what the impact of this deficit could be on this city. If elected, what would be your approach to spending, given that we may be in for some difficult days?
Absolutely. I mean, we have to start with fiscal responsibility. We need, you know, we have a $13 billion budget in Los Angeles, but we need to find a way to be fiscally responsible while we meet the needs of our constituents. So I'm going to be committed to a balanced budget. Ultimately, we have, you know, that's how I run my household. That's how I was able to purchase a home, you know, when I was 25 years old with my wife. You know, we worked hard, we saved money, we created a budget, and we stuck to it. And those are the same principles that I use in business and in my daily, you know, profession. You know, I'm the only candidate that actually comes from a background where I've had to work in diverse types of, you know, businesses from the public and private sector where accountability is extremely important. That's the second thing. We need more transparency and accountability in the city. So I'm going to definitely push for that. With over 400 financial reports published annually in the city, we need to look at these, you know, critically and make sure that every single dollar is spent wisely. At the same time, we do need to invest in our crumbling infrastructure. If you look around us, just here in the valley especially, with a little bit of rain, our streets flood, right? Trees start falling over. Power lines start falling over. Just a few months ago, we had a water main burst in my neighborhood in Sherman Oaks and literally flooded the entire, you know, three, four-block neighborhood around my house. These types of things can't happen. We can't wait till, you know, these pipes burst or power lines fall. You know, my parents had their power go out for about four days during the last storms. So we need, we need to invest in infrastructure. We need to align our budget with the everyday needs of our constituents and have it less about, you know, ideological agendas.
For decades now, the city of L.A. has looked for ways to move Angelinos from the valley to the west side. After decades and dozens of ideas for a 405 corridor, metros now winnowed it down to a handful of ideas, which, if any, of the current proposals do you support? And why? And we've got about a minute left on the clock for your portion of the eve.
Oh, thank you. So I support an underground train. I know it's going to take 30, 40 years probably to build it. In addition to that, I think we need to have more public transportation options that we can have immediately. For example, you know, I would support having something like trolleys up and down Ventura Boulevard. You know, we have these new bus lanes that, when you look at, you know, there are very little buses actually using those lanes. So we need maybe smaller types of buses that are constantly going up and down these streets. So I want to save my time for anything else.
I have 30 seconds. If you'd like to comment on the Van Nuys Airport and noise and traffic it has incurred. 20 seconds left on the clock.
Are there opposing remarks outside of this?
Yes, you will, at the end.
Okay, great. So the Van Nuys Airport and noise, you know, again, I'm a lifelong resident of the valley. When I lived in North Hollywood, we had noise from the Burbank Airport. Now I live in Sherman Oaks, and there's, you know, noise over me. I've been in Sherman Oaks for 17 years. We have to look at flight patterns that don't make so much noise, maybe alternate flight patterns so that it's not the same residence, you know, head that these airplanes are constantly flying over. It's a serious problem, and we have to address it.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it. And we will see you after we see our next two candidates. That's the end of our time now for Lev Baronian. We're going to bring Nithya Raman now to our Zoom stage, and Nithya is here. So what we will do at this point in time is start the clock again at 20 minutes. And Nithya Raman, the same question to you, an opening statement, where we're going to be, you hear, an opportunity to introduce yourself, but to also maybe share a couple of things that you have yet to share about yourself with those watching.
Okay. Well, thank you so much to everyone here for organizing this event. Thank you, Alex, for hosting. My name is Nithya. I'm the current council member for Council District 4. I'm an urban planner by training. I have degrees from both Harvard and MIT. I'm the mother to twins, second graders, they're eight years old. And I had an unusual pathway to running for office. I was not involved in local politics at all. But when I was home from the workforce caring for my twins when they were first born, I saw tents around me in the neighborhood and wanted to help, a growing number of tents. And so I joined my Neighborhood Council's Homelessness Committee. I, through that, met a whole bunch of other people who wanted to do the same thing, wanted to help and give back to their communities. And we started one of the largest, now one of the largest volunteer-run homelessness response organizations in the city. And I ran for office because I felt like there was a real urgency for change that I felt for Los Angeles on the issue of homelessness and so many other things that mattered to me, that mattered to all of these other volunteers. And I didn't see that reflected in my elected officials. And so I thought about running. I decided to run. And then I ended up winning against an incumbent for the first time in almost two decades. And now I've been in the role for about three years and change. And I'm running for reelection on a record of delivering for the district. On homelessness, which was an issue that I talked about extensively, we have markedly fewer encampments in the district. After six years of increases in unsheltered homelessness, my team and I delivered through hard work a decrease under our watch for the first time in many years because we built a team that connected people who were experiencing homelessness to shelter over and over again, including at numerous encampments under underpasses like the Coldwater Underpass and the Van Nuys 101 Underpass and so on. Our district is safer than when I started. Both violent and property crime have dropped during my term. And we've added unarmed alternatives to calling the police that have reduced demands for PD and offered safer responses for issues that residents are facing. I've passed big, bold climate legislation. We've decarbonized all new construction in L A, making us the largest city in America to do so. But I've also done climate work and traffic safety work at the district level. I've built safer streets. I put in traffic lights, including all along Ventura Boulevard, added three new ones. We built the district's first protected bike lanes. We closed parts of Griffith Park to automobile traffic. And we, through our office's leadership, created the first real funding source for public transit infrastructure um, in L A, which I'm really, really excited about. Uh, it's because I think of my commitment to working hard and collaborating that I have so many endorsements, um, for this race. Almost a hundred endorsements from elected officials, from Mayor Karen Bass to Congressman Brad Sherman, Council President Krikorian, from the Democratic Party, from Planned Parenthood, from the Sierra Club and so many more, almost a hundred total organizations and individuals. But you wanted to know something about me that I haven't shared before. Um, and I started weightlifting regularly this past year. And my goal is to do a pull-up by the end of twenty twenty-four. And so I'm hopeful that I'll get there, but I feel very far away from it.
That's what I make elastic bands for is what I always say. Uh, staying with the topic of, uh, homelessness, how important do you believe it is to maintain the integrity of a neighborhood? When it comes to providing shelter for the unhoused and maybe you could tell us a bit more about how you've been going about doing that?
Yeah. So we have, you know, we homelessness looks the way that it does in Los Angeles because we have a lack of shelter beds. Um, other cities that have even more unhoused residents than Los Angeles, like the city of New York, have fewer people living on the streets. Because, for example, New York, they have a mandate to have a shelter bed for every person who is experiencing homelessness. And so even though they have, you know, eighty thousand homeless people, eighty thousand odd homeless people in the city of New York, very few of them are actually experiencing unsheltered homelessness. That means they're on the street, right? In tents, under tarps. Um, here in Los Angeles, we only have a third of the shelter beds that we need. So we have something like forty-six thousand homeless people on any given night. A third of the shelter beds that we need. So we have more than thirty thousand people on any given night here in this city who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness, which means that we actually have more people dying on the streets of L A than in New York, even though conditions here seem, you know, more hospitable to experiencing homelessness. So what we've done in the district has been to increase the number of shelter beds available for people who are experiencing homelessness in the district. We converted a hotel site, um, into a long-term shelter site in Hollywood. Uh, we raise money from other sources for motel and hotel vouchers. We partnered with Mayor Bass to get her inside safe interventions in the district. And through that, we have housed people at encampment after encampment by offering that shelter to people. At the Coldwater Underpass, the Van Nuys Underpass, eighty-four people along the L A River at the Hollywood Bowl Park and Ride in Studio City, um, on the corner of Highland and Franklin. These are all places where there were large encampments when I got elected. Um, and now there aren't individuals residing there because we were able to connect people to shelter. And because we weren't shoving them down the street um, or moving them into another neighborhood, those areas have largely stayed clear. So you asked about citing shelters in a neighborhood. How important is the integrity of a neighborhood? I think in responding to homelessness, we have to build shelters all over Los Angeles. Um, we have to increase our shelter capacity here in L A. Um, and that is the unfortunate reality of where we are right now. We will not be able to address homelessness and have our neighborhoods look exactly the same as they do now. But the reality is we're already dealing with that. Our neighborhoods already don't look the same because we have so much homelessness. And I would much rather have our neighborhoods be safer by having people in housing and off the streets. Um, and I think every neighborhood, uh, can accommodate, uh, some form of shelter and, and I think we can make real progress on this issue if we're able to do that.
When it comes to crime, uh, by some metrics, crime is on the rise. By others, it is on the decline. And yet we all know that there are a lot of Angelinos who are not feeling safe. How safe would you say C D four is at present? And what are you doing to reduce the crime that does exist in your district?
So I'm, you know, I so appreciate this question. I think safety is so important for Los Angeles, for every aspect of its success and for the well-being of its people. And I'm really happy that under, over the last three years, both violent and property crime have gone down in my district. Um, after a worrying spike during the pandemic, uh, and that, that is good. We're, we're on a better track than we were before. Um, I think in responding to the crime that is there and to perceptions of safety, which are also really important, we have to do two kinds of things. One is that we have to understand where certain categories of crime are increasing. So we've seen, for example, an increase in um, home burglaries in particular, uh, neighborhoods, particularly in our hillsides. And we've seen that not just in our district, but all over the city. Uh, we've also seen some increases in retail theft, um, and, and also increases in car theft. Much of these are driven by the work of organized rings. And so I really have looked to our P D to put focused investigative resources into investigating these rings and making arrests so that we can actually reduce crime. And I have faith in this process because I saw it work. When I first started, there was a huge spike in the Hollywood, uh, area of what was called follow home robberies. And we were able to put investigative resources into that, uh, make arrests, and now those have gone down significantly. And so I know that putting the work into it and making sure that we're addressing organized crime is a way that we can make real impact on the categories of crime that we're still seeing increases in across the entire city. You also asked about perceptions of safety and I do want to just respond to that. One of the things that I think is really important is that when you call nine one one, somebody should come and it, it should be the right person that you need. But we are facing some real challenges with having the right person come when you call. Uh, we have lower staffing in P D, um, and we're having really long response times. Part of the reason why I've been so focused on making sure that we have alternative responses like the circle program, which I've expanded in two different neighborhoods in my district, is because they actually take calls for nonviolent issues off of the P D's plate and enable us to create a system where someone will come when you call and it's the right person for the need that you're calling. Particularly given that many, many incidents about which people are calling nine one one are nonviolent incidents. In fact, the majority of them are. And so I think in this context, ensuring that people safe will have to build out that system.
I want to move to the topic of antisemitism because we're about halfway through our time. And this is where we got a lot of our questions from the folks watching tonight. Nithya Ramen, do you consider Jews a minority here in L A? And if so, in what ways is this group similar to or different from other minorities living here?
Um, I, I mean, I certainly consider Jewish people to be a minority here in the city of Los Angeles. Um, I think the numbers bear that out. Uh, and I think as someone who comes from a minority group myself, um, you know, I think there's a huge number of similarities between, uh, the challenges that all of us face. When I first started in office, um, I remember that, uh, it was during the pre-vaccine COVID period. Uh, right after Trump had blamed COVID on, you know, called it the China, um, you know, China disease or, or, um, virus. Um, and there was a rise in AAPI hate crimes, uh, hate crimes against Asian people. Now we've seen a rise in antisemitic incidents after October seventh. Um, and I think these are issues for which we have to pay really close attention. These are issues which demand response and we have responded, uh, both through our council office and through the city as a whole, um, through, to these incidents. Uh, but I think there's a huge number of similarities between the issues that, um, Jewish people in Los Angeles face and the issues that other minority groups face in the city.
In twenty twenty, when you were elected to this position, uh, you received an endorsement from the Democratic Socialists of America's L A chapter. And a lot of the questions submitted tonight had to do with that endorsement. Uh, the D S A recently voted to uphold their endorsement of you despite censuring you at the same time. And we would love to have you share with us tonight what within the D S A's platform you do align with? And what, if anything, do you take issue with when it comes to their platform?
You know, I think I've been fairly open about my differences with D S A L A's positions on, on issues and uh, I think the censure really came about from some of the differences that we've had on, on uh, how we talk about what happened on October seventh. Um, but I do want to say that when I first was elected, I, I was engaged with D S A L A because we shared a lot of, uh, focus on issues of common concern to, to many, many Angelinos. On Medicare for All, on environmental action and taking strong environmental action, on tenants' rights issues, on ensuring that we had a homelessness response that was really person centric. Um, and those were the issues, uh, that I spoke about most during my last campaign. And there is, I think, very few other groups uh, who are politically active here in Los Angeles that have also really been issues focused on, on those issues, which were issues that drove me to run for office. They were the issues that I've been working on the most since I've been in office. When, um, when October seventh happened, I was the, one of the first, um, to condemn the horrific terrorist attacks in City Hall. Um, I spoke up, uh, uh, about, um, my shared grief with residents here in Los Angeles, um, and for Israelis who had lost their lives. And I also spoke up when, um, there were statements put out by D S A's national chap- chapter that were really lacking in empathy, um, uh, around what had happened uh, on October seventh and, and the real lives lost um, and the horrors of what had happened that day. And I really found that unacceptable. Um, and I did speak out against it and, and I think that's really where the censure came from. Um, and, you know, I really, I've tried to move through this moment. Um, which has been a very difficult moment for so many, uh, across the world and here in Los Angeles. I've tried to move through this moment. Um, with as much empathy as I possibly can, uh, with as much humility as I can muster. Um, I'm not Israeli, I'm not Palestinian, I'm not Jewish, I'm not Muslim. Um, and I've spent a lot of time listening and learning. I've visited with Jewish organizations across the district. I've um, visited with families of hostages. Uh, and I've also visited at the Islamic Center and I was, you know, uh, spoken out about, uh, uh, civilian lives, Palestinian lives uh, being lost in, in Gaza as well. And I've really, I've really tried to move through this with as much empathy um, as I can have, uh, and, and humility.
Turning to our city's budget, we are currently facing a gap that could be up to four hundred million dollars. And there has been a lot of debate and discussion about how whatever money we do have at present should be spent and what the impact of this deficit will ultimately be on L A. How do you think the city should approach spending in this moment, given that there might be very tough times ahead?
Um, I think we are trying to grapple with this budget shortfall, um, right now with the city. Uh, and one of the things that we are doing is to um, really figure out what our core services are and to ensure that we're staffed to address those core services. This is a budget shortfall I feared would come. I talked about this publicly uh, when we are, um, you know, uh, discussing some of these new contracts. And I think it's going to really force us to make some very, very tough choices uh, over the next couple of years in how we respond to some of the biggest issues that we're facing. Um, we are going to have to accept service levels as they are now. So for a long time, for the past three years, in fact, I've been going out and telling people we can't, you know, meet some of the service goals that we have in terms of addressing basic service needs like fixing streetlights quickly or fixing sidewalks quickly because we are not staffed up at the city right now. Um, and what this budget shortfall means is that we are not going to be able to hire for those positions at all. Uh, and that means that the very, very slow response that we're getting on some of the most important quality of life issues that we're facing here in the city of Los Angeles are going to be baked into our city's functioning as we move forward. So how do we negotiate this, even as we're dealing with crises that will require massive investment like our homelessness crisis? We also have a lawsuit against us. Uh, it's called Alliance Settlement, which will necessitate us spending a large amount of money on the issue of homelessness that we've committed to over the next three years. I think this means that we are going to have to make some very, very hard choices about what we fund and what we don't fund. And I think that this moment will require significant, significant honesty uh, with our constituents about what these choices mean. Uh, how will we make these choices? How will we figure out what is important and what is not? And I think that's that's the honest conversation that I've been trying to have with constituents over the past, you know, few months in particular. Um, and that I'm committed to continuing to have as we move forward and figure out what is our priority for the city? What is our priority for the district that needs addressing within a very, very limited fiscal environment?
When it comes to transportation, uh, the city of Los Angeles has struggled for a long time to figure out how to transport us from the San Fernando Valley to the west side. There are, as you know, a number of ideas for a four or five corridor, which if any of the current options do you support and why?
You know, I've been pretty vocal, um, about the fact that if we can build underground in the middle, in mid-city, um, as we've done on the Purple Line, I think we should be building underground in the valley as well. The valley deserves significant transportation investment. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm really committed to making sure that we can get the best option, um, that we can. One of the things I want to say though, is that this intervention, this Pulvera Transit Corridor, has the potential to be one of the most transformative um, transportation projects in the entire city. The four oh five corridor is one of the most trafficked corridors in the country. And so if we are able to create a mode of transit between, uh, uh, the valley and the basin that can really take people off of the four oh five, it can be a total change for the city of Los Angeles. To me, looking at the ridership projections right now between the mono rail and the heavy rail options, it is the heavy rail options that make the most sense. If we're going to put that much money into it, we should be putting our money into an investment that is really going to have the capacity, carrying capacity for passengers, the frequency, um, that we need in order to really incentivize drivers to get out of their cars and get onto the train. I also think we need to stop at UCLA, um, and if, you know, because a lot of people work at UCLA, go to school at UCLA and live in the Southern San Fernando Valley. And I think, um, I think this would be a missed opportunity if we, if we don't include that stop.
Nithya Ramen, that brings us exactly to the end of our twenty minutes with you. We appreciate your time. And again, for those who might be, uh, just joining into this debate and haven't been watching from the beginning, we'll be able to hear from all three of our candidates at the very end. But with that, I believe we have Ethan Weaver on the line. So we will start as we have with our other two candidates this evening, giving you an opportunity to address and introduce yourselves to our audience tonight and ideally sharing a thing or two that you have yet to share at candidate forums such as this.
Great. Well, thank you all so much. Thank you, Stephen Weiss, uh, for hosting us and Alex for moderating. Um, so I never thought I was going to be running for office. This was not part of my life dream. Um, I had one life dream and that was to serve my community as a prosecutor and that's what I did. I graduated UCLA Law and have been a deputy city attorney for the city of Los Angeles ever since. Um, thought I was going to spend my whole career there, uh, do thirty years and retire. Um, but then five years ago, I became what's called a neighborhood prosecutor, which is a prosecutor that works in your local community, um, solving problems on the ground. I left City Hall and was out in the Hollywood neighborhood every single day, meeting folks where they were and solving their problems there. And I got to do a huge array of issues from cracking down on party houses up in the hills to dealing with, um, habitual thieves on Hollywood Boulevard, um, and even cracking down some weird issues like this guy rented a two-bedroom rent stabilized apartment during the pandemic, put thirty-three bunk beds in it and turned it into a hostel. This was, and when everyone was locked in, stuck in their houses. And so these are the kinds of problems that I not only tackled, but I actually solved. Um, and if it were up to me, I would keep doing that work. But then three years ago, my job changed significantly and that's when my opponent was elected. And the relationship between public safety and the city broke down immediately. Um, the, uh, field deputy that was assigned to work with law enforcement was an activist who was online saying, all cops are bastards, defund the police. And it would have been bad enough if And it would have been bad enough if there was just us in law enforcement feeling this way. But during my time, I worked with community leaders across the spectrum, from homeowners and neighborhood councils to tenants and small business owners. And everyone kept saying the same thing. Ethan, if our problem doesn't fit with the ideology of the office, our problems go unsolved. And, and no one was stepping up to provide a different direction. And so I realized the thing that really motivates me is public service. And I truly believe that the public needs a different option and a different servant. So that's why I'm running to be your next city council member and it's an honor to come speak with you all.
When it comes to the very pressing issue of homelessness, it often seems to many like a really intractable problem because our unhoused population is such a truly diverse population. If elected, what would be your approach for addressing this challenge?
Yeah, so I see it as both a long-term problem with, that also needs short-term solutions. So the city of Los Angeles is spending $1.3 billion a year on homelessness. Every year for the last decade, the budget's gotten larger and every year the problem's gotten worse. And no one has stopped to ask, "Why? Why do we keep throwing more money at this problem and yet it keeps getting worse?" And there's a lot of reasons for that. It's not just one thing, but a major problem is the bureaucracy that is spending that money. It's called LASSA. And as someone who works in the city and has seen every city agency from the inside, I have never seen a more disastrous agency in my life. It is designed to fail. And so I have a plan to reform that organization, to do a phased withdrawal, to set up a city organization that is actually accountable to our elected leaders. Because right now, there is no accountability between our elected leaders and this bureaucracy. It is completely off, off the rails. And so no matter how much money we spend, we have to fix the machinery that's spending it. But that's going to take time. It's going to take coalition building. It's not going to come overnight. In the short term, we need to manage this problem better on the streets. Everyone feels compassion for people experiencing homelessness, but they feel deep frustration and anger when there's an encampment in front of their kid's school or in front of their house that stays there for weeks or months or longer. And there's needles on the sidewalk and they're just left there. That turns the compassion into anger. The city has tools where we can manage this problem better and rebuild the trust with the, the community that are not being used right now. And so I have, I want to invest more and dedicate resources to keeping our sidewalks cleaner and safer so that it restores trust in the city and builds the, the patience for the long-term solutions we need.
How important do you believe it is to maintain the integrity of a neighborhood when it comes to providing shelter for the unhoused? And how would you go about doing that?
Absolutely. There's a really great example of how that is done wrong right now in CD4. In Los Feliz, there's a Bridge Home Shelter on Riverside Drive. And when that shelter was built, it was built with explicit promises to the community. If you accept this shelter, you will get a no camping zone put around the shelter to keep encampments from springing up in the middle of a neighborhood. You will get additional police and sanitation resources to prevent crime and waste from piling up on your streets. The city has violated all three of those promises. The city, my opponent has refused to put those signs up and refused to deploy the resources that are already sitting in a bank account waiting to be used. And what has happened is I've gone to this community, I've spent a lot, I live in this community, I spend a lot of time here. And I have met countless people, in fact, they've come to public comment meetings that have said, "We supported the shelter when it was built, the city violated its promises to us and now we want the shelter removed." The city's violation of its promises and mismanagement of the problem have turned people who said yes to helping into people that are saying no. That is the problem with mismanagement and the problem that we're facing. It's not just CD4. Look at other council offices who are trying to build homeless housing, who are facing tremendous community backlash because they look at problems like the Riverside Bridge Shelter. So I think it is so critical that we keep the community engaged with us when we're building new shelters. In fact, I don't even know that we can build new shelters until the city starts rebuilding the trust that it's already violated with its current locations.
Mr. Weaver, I want to remind you that one of the, the ground rules we've said, we want to try to focus on what you would do if elected, less on what others may have been doing in office. With that, we'll turn to COVID-era protections, which have recently come to an end in the city. And according to the L.A. Housing Department, more than $472 million are currently owed in rent. What do you think can and should be done to prevent what many are worried will become an eviction tsunami? And how would you simultaneously compensate property owners who have lost significant income?
Yeah, so this is a problem that I'm intimately aware of because I'm the only candidate in the race that's a renter. I live in a rent stabilized studio apartment with my partner, Michael. And my generation is priced out of the housing market. And so this is something that I feel very, very personally. And at the same time, the building that I live in was owned by the same family for 40 years. It had the same apartment manager for 30 years. And then during the pandemic, the owners threw up their hands and said, "We're done." And now my building is owned by Blackstone, controlled by Blackstone, and it has deteriorated significantly. And so I'm both aware of the, the struggles of renters as one. And also, the big concern I have is the corporate ownership of property, whether it's multifamily or single-family, corporations are coming in. And if we don't keep our ecosystem in balance, I'm very concerned about what's to come. So obviously, we need to protect renters. I'm a renter. I want those kinds of protections. But if we tip the scales too far in one direction or the other, I'm really concerned about what's coming. And it's very easy to say we want to provide rental payments and assistance. But as one of your questions is coming, our, our budgets are shrinking. So we need to be very realistic about the kinds of interventions that we pursue.
We're not quite to budget yet. We will spend some time here talking about crime. By some metrics, certain crimes are rising, others are on the decline. Many Angelenos either way are not feeling safe. How safe would you say CD4 is at present? And if elected, what would you do to reduce the perception that people have of threats to their well-being?
Yeah, so the good news is your likelihood of being murdered is down. The bad news is the likelihood of your home being burglarized even while you're inside of it is up. Just a few weeks ago, I was doing a walk of small businesses on Ventura and Van Nuys Boulevard. And I went to three small businesses in a row, all owned by minority women. And all three of them kept their doors locked until a customer knocks on them. And that's because they experienced so much chaos on the streets every single day. And for a small business, it's not just death to their customers, it's, it's death to the community. Small business is what makes people want to be out in neighborhoods like Sherman Oaks. And the reason, there's a lot of reasons for this, but a main one is our massively low deployed police. When I started as a neighborhood prosecutor, LAPD had around 10,000 officers. We're now dipping below 8,900. And I've heard that there's about 500 officers about to retire in March. To put that in perspective, the last LAPD class graduated 33 people. Our, our law enforcement is trending the wrong way. And as other candidates talked about, when people pick up the phone, there aren't enough officers to respond. And that's why our burglaries are up. And that's why problems like petty theft are deprioritized because officers are spending all of their time responding to violent calls. We need leadership that, one, will support the mayor's contracts to attract new police officers by raising LAPD's wages to what surrounding jurisdictions pay. And we also need leadership that actually thinks, you know, catalytic converter theft is a crime and not something that is Toyota and Honda's fault. And we need leadership that actually believes that encampments around schools shouldn't happen. These things are all nested in public safety. And one of the reasons officers don't want to work for LAPD is because they do not feel supported by our elected leaders. And I'm running to provide the leadership, public safety, not just police, but firefighters, 911 operators need to turn this city around.
Turning to the topic of antisemitism, Ethan Weaver, do you consider Jews a minority in L.A.? If so, in what way is this group similar to or different from other minorities?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, the Jewish community is a minority group. And, you know, there's, we could draw comparisons to a lot of different groups. But a group that I feel a lot of kinship with is the LGBT group. I am a member of the LGBT community and I feel some similarities in that the, both the Jewish community and the LGBT community have been used not just as, you know, not just objects of hate, but there's been a politicization of the hate towards our communities. And that, that is a unique kind of hate. It's not just the human bigotry that every type of demographic experiences. I think once hate is politicized, it becomes something unique. And I think it's really important that our elected leaders understand the politicization of hate.
How would you draw the line, if elected, between legitimate criticism and protest of Israel's policies and incidents of outright antisemitism?
Yeah, so I have to kind of, this is the lawyer in my brain, I kind of think about it from two sides. From the personal side, there is clear antisemitism that is disgusting, that we see it every single day on Twitter, in our communities, it's acted upon in our streets. And for some reason, it's become politically acceptable with some of the political groups involved in this election. And I find that morally repulsive. As I think about it from a, a leader standpoint, at a political, as a political leader, the First Amendment is, is sacrosanct. And the, the line is when, when language incites violence, when language motivates, incites violence, that is the, the line that it moves out of the First Amendment. And so I think it is important as individuals that our leaders call out antisemitism and hate, but also maintain that the First Amendment is, is one of our most precious prizes as Americans and it needs to be protected as well.
Returning to the city's finances, as you know, the city is currently facing a budget gap of up to $400 million. When it comes to the money that we do have and how it should be spent, what would be your approach to spending, given that we may be in for some very difficult days quite soon?
Yeah, we are. We have to tighten the belt as a city. And, you know, this is, this is what everyone does. When your income drops or when your expenses go up, you tighten your belt. And the very first thing every elected leader should be looking at is looking in, looking at our own city budget and saying, "Where can we cut? Where can we pull in?" And one thing that really frustrates me as someone who works in the city agency is often these cuts are kind of done by fiat, just, "Okay, agency, cut this amount." I think it is really critical that as we tighten the belt, our belt as a city, that our leaders are actively involved in those decisions. Because we need our leaders to be deciding, "Okay, where are we cutting?" We're not just going to tell an agency, "Cut 10% of your budget." But where we cut really matters. And I think one of our problems as a city is that our leaders don't actively manage this problem, don't actively manage homelessness or the budget or anything else. They just kind of delegate. As an elected leader, I'm going to be leaning into these, these problems. The other big thing that no one talks about is there's a reason our tax revenue is dropping. Tourists don't want to come here. This is a, our biggest generator of revenue is tourism. And look at the state of our streets. This isn't a, go to Hollywood Boulevard. Is this a place where tourists want to come? I, I say that as someone who worked on Hollywood Boulevard as a prosecutor for years. We need to make this city safer and cleaner so tourists want to come here and bring their tax dollars. We also need to make this place friendly for small businesses. Our city is strangling our small business community and businesses are leaving. And that with them goes our tax base. And so having leadership that prioritizes our small businesses, cuts red tape, doesn't just view them as a piggy bank for the city to extract every dollar but provide no services. This is how we get our economy thriving again. And so I think it doesn't make sense to just talk about the downside of the budget. We also need to talk about where we can build more budget by growth.
Turning to the topic of transportation, for decades, the city has looked for ways to move people from the Valley to the West Side. After decades of time, dozens of ideas for a 405 corridor, Metro has now brought it down to just a handful. Which, if any of the current options, do you support and why?
Yeah, so I'm the only candidate in this race who lived many years as an Angelino without a car. I live a few blocks from the Red Line, Hollywood and Western is my stop. And I used to take it for almost four years without a car. I love heavy rail. I've relied on it. It's great. It made my life so much better. And so I really want to see this rail line come into the Valley. It's going to relieve pressure on the highest traffic corridor in the country. As it relates to which lines, absolutely, it needs to be underground. The above-ground heavy rail lines will destroy community. But it's hard beyond that to really say which line is the best because Metro hasn't released its environmental impact report. And that is important because right now, the, the actual lines themselves are just kind of loose estimates about where they're going to go. It's not until the EIR comes out that the plans are really going to be concrete, where we're going to have the kind of details necessary to choose one line or the other. So I'm withholding judgment until I see that EIR, but underground, the above-ground lines are just not acceptable.
We will turn now, in the roughly two minutes we have, to Van Nuys Airport, where noise, pollution and traffic increases has been a huge concern for many CD4 residents and many folks watching tonight. Seeing as the airport authority is operated by the city, what would you do if elected to address the situation there?
Yeah, so one of the tricky nuances of our city is we have a bunch of city agencies that have their own authorities. Public Works is its own authority. It doesn't really report to City Council. And the Los Angeles World Airport is one of those. It's this weird city agency that doesn't report directly to, to City Hall. And that makes it challenging for a leader to be able to directly affect Van Nuys Airport. Because really, it's the FAA and our congressional leadership that should be taking the, the bull by the horns on this one. But I think there's a couple of things that are worth noting. One is, I think it is, it is, the Van Nuys Airport has become really just a taxi service for the rich. It's just private jets and a lot of industry comes through there too. But I think a lot of the, the increase in traffic we're seeing is, it's just from the, the wealthy flying their jets. And I think that is an important thing to keep in mind as we're talking about what the airport is. But I also think it's important that our elected leaders, even though we may not have direct control over the World Airports, to speak for the community, to be an amplifier for the community's needs. Because I get it. I've lived under an air, under a flight path for the Burbank Airport before. It's loud. It is disruptive. But when my friends bought that house that I rented a room from, they bought the house knowing they were under those, those flight paths and the home price matched that. And I think to, to now change those flight paths and affect communities that have never had them before is, is wrong. And I think we need leadership that calls a spade a spade.
You have 10 seconds left on the clock, so I think we will leave it at that point. We will bring back our two other candidates. And for those who missed the beginning of our event this evening, we are going to give each of our candidates three minutes to make any closing remarks that they would like to make, as well as respond to anything that other candidates have said over the course of this evening. And if anyone is looking for a prompt, one of the questions that we didn't get to this evening, but is very much inspired by our host this evening, is about the Jewish concept of Tikkun Olam, which means to repair the world. And if you so choose in your closing statements, we would love to hear the ways that you think the city of Los Angeles is most in need of repair and what might make you uniquely suited to getting the job done. So once again, each of our candidates will have three minutes on the clock. And once again, we will go in alphabetical order, which means first up will be Leif Brunn.
I just wanted, before we start speaking, I just wanted to thank all of our candidates on behalf of Stephen Weiss Temple and our other participating synagogues. We appreciate the support that we receive from all the leadership of the synagogues. To make this happen, once again, Valley Beth Shalom, Temple Beth Hillel, Temple Israel of Hollywood and the Board of Rabbis of Southern California, very much appreciate their participation. And to all of you for tuning in to be informed voters. And we encourage you, of course, to vote and to encourage your friends to vote. It's the most important way that we have of letting our voices be heard. And I would just also want to commend our candidates for their decorum. And really, it's possible to conduct- And really, it's possible to conduct a political campaign with a certain degree of respect and dignity. And you've shared it with us this evening and we are deeply appreciative of that. So with that, I think I would just make one correction. Alex, we we did agree that they would go in reverse alphabetical order to close. So I just wanted to let, yeah, so I just wanted to let, it was going to be Mr. Weaver, Mr. Ramon, and then Mr. Veroni in that order. So, Mr. Weaver.
Great. Thank you so much. And again, thank you all so much for being here, Alex Coen. Thank you so much, not just for hosting, but for all of the work you've done, reporting on the stories that really affect our community for years. The, like I said, the reason I got into this race is because I saw the city failing at a neighborhood level, at the neighborhood level. I saw my community that I was fighting for every single day deteriorating. And it really begs the question, the question for all of you watching, are you better off now than you were four years ago? Do you feel safer in your homes than you do four years ago? Do you feel optimistic about the direction of our city as you did four years ago? And the reason I'm running isn't just because I don't think the answer is yes to that, but because every community I go to feels we're headed in the wrong direction. And every answer they get is just a rehashing of ideas that they've been hearing for years and no real sense of change in direction. I'm running to give a different alternative, to push things in a different direction. And I think it's, I think it is important to keep in mind, who is representing us and who has the ear of the people representing us? And I want to go back. I think it's really important that we go back to the question about the democratic socialists of America, because that's one of the reasons I got involved in this race. The democratic socialists of America, the DSA, not only do they have these beliefs about Israel, but they have some other beliefs that are absolutely horrible, in my opinion. They don't believe in defunding the police, they believe in abolishing the police. They believe that the, that private property should be abolished. And certain candidates, when they run on this call, that have run for office before, have said that they believe in the principles of collective ownership of private property. This is just Marxism repackaged. And I am very concerned. And and the last thing is, you know, I'm I'm very proud of the people that have endorsed me. I have endorsement from first responders, the building trades, business groups. And I've met, I've got, I've met with people that haven't endorsed me, that I've asked their endorsement for. Not a single, not a single person that I've ever asked for their support has ever demanded that, should I be elected, that we would be co-governing. Yet that is a requirement of the democratic socialists of America to co-government with the elects that they get elected. And it is not enough to merely brush off antisemitic statements. But when candidates are not only supported by, but are actually card carrying members of groups and and have their volunteers out knocking on doors multiple times in the next few weeks to support, the relationship is close. And I think it is very important to to understand that. I'm not running for outside groups, I'm running for the community that I have served. And I'm
Mr. Weaver, we are going to, this is three minutes. And again, I just want to remind that throughout this evening, we are really hoping to focus on your ideas and perspectives. The time now does turn three minutes to Nithya Ramen, who may choose to respond to some of the things just spent there, can respond to this notion of tikkun alam or may use the time as she wishes. So Nithya Ramen, your three minutes begins now.
Thank you, thank you so much, Alex, for your moderation and and for the thoughtful questions. Thank you Rabbi Stern and to the Stephen Wise community and so many of the other institutions that came together to organize this. I've had the privilege of being at Stephen Wise a number of times in my time in office and it's always been such a beautiful and welcoming space for me. And I'm just grateful to be here with all of you. You know, I, I, you know, I really just want to, as I think through why I'm running for reelection. You know, I I love Los Angeles so much. And I ran for office because I didn't feel like people were working hard enough for this city. And they weren't being honest with us about what it's going to take to overcome the challenges that we're facing right now. We have been through so much, but we have so many challenges ahead. We have to continue to bring down crime. We have to house so many more people who are still on the streets despite so much money that's been spent already, so much work that's been happening already. Traffic violence is rising now, traffic deaths are actually higher than homicides and and they're only growing. We're seeing this huge budget deficit that's going to grow year after year for the next four years if we're looking at our projections. But, you know, I look at these immense problems and the reason I want to be doing this again and the reason I'm grateful to be here, you know, talking to all of you is, we, we had really big problems when I got elected. We were just in the pre-vaccine period and and post-COVID, just coming out of that COVID period. There was such a big spike in violent crime then, there were huge encampments across my district. There was a significant and ongoing and then worsening crisis of trust in our local government. But I'm really proud to say that over the last three years, I've taken real steps forward to address these big, big problems. You know, so many of those large encampments are gone. We've resolved 15 major encampments across the district. Violent and property crime are down. We're developing real reforms in City Hall that are taking power away from elected officials, reducing opportunities for corruption. We put independent redistricting on the ballot under my leadership. I, I want to restore trust and you can't restore trust without working hard and delivering on results for our residents and being clear eyed about the challenges that we're going to face, the trade offs that we will have to make. We have a situation ahead where we have to make real choices about what we invest in. And I really just want to say that I'm running for reelection because I want to keep working hard for you and I want to keep making those hard choices in partnership with all of you. So thank you very much.
And that was exactly three minutes, which means Lev Brun, we can reset the, turn to you for your final remarks. Okay, I love you on mute.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Everyone hear me now? Yeah, I'd also like to thank you, Alex, for being the moderator tonight and Rabbi Ron Cern and the Wise Temple and all the other institutions as well for helping make this a reality tonight. Los Angeles isn't just an ideological platform or career path for me. It's been my family's home for half a century. It's a vibrant tapestry of memories, dreams, aspirations. It's where we forged lifelong friendships, celebrated milestones, built our homes. And it pains me to witness the vast potential of Los Angeles remain unrealized. As a devoted family man and proud father of three, I've been working since the age of 16 and I've never shied away from responsibility. And I won't abandon my city, my neighborhood or you. Having been born and raised here in Los Angeles, I'm deeply rooted in the fabric of this community. I believe my background as a NASA award winning engineer has instilled in me a drive to bring data driven and science based innovation that'll propel Los Angeles in into the future. My commitment lies solely with the people and I pledge to co-government with them, not the opposing special interests who are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, in this, in this election. I'm not a career bureaucrat or a politician repeating finely crafted talking points. I think that's important to keep in mind, I'm a real member of this community. The constituents candidate, a professional problem solver, dedicated to leaving Los Angeles better for future generations. You know, Albert Einstein aptly said that the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. I believe Los Angeles is actually broken because of our elected officials and the others who we've been trusted, you know, to to bring solutions. And it needs to be fixed. So here, I think, you know, was a good opportunity to, you know, mention tikkun alam, the Jewish principle of repairing the world. I understand the importance of community and collective responsibility in fixing our problems. I recognize the invaluable contributions that the Jewish community has made to the cultural and economic landscape of Los Angeles. And I'm committed to working hand in hand to ensure that all of our voices are heard and all of our needs are met. You know, the current political system incentivizes corruption. It incentivizes special interests, you know, trying to bring forth their agendas and what's, what it, what matters to them. But I refuse to be a part of that. Instead, I'm stepping up because, like you, I'm a real member of this community and I refuse to quit on Los Angeles. I promise to be the most accessible council member in the city of Los Angeles. And I think together, we're going to be able to transform this city into the most beautiful and livable place on earth. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you to our candidates, thank you to our moderator, wishing you three the best of luck in your races. And thank you for being a part of our evening. Good night, folks.